The United States of America and through the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call please.
Khan?
Here.
Ross?
Here.
Humpson?
Here.
Laura?
McLaughlin?
Here.
Pam?
Here.
Daryl?
Here.
Rizzo?
Assam.
He's approved.
Okay, thank you. Approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted for August 21st, 2023.
All those in favor of approving the agenda as submitted, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None?
Do we get second?
Oh, sorry.
I'll second.
Thank you TJ. And that is approved. Public comment? None? Chairperson comment? None. Happy Summit, welcome back. New business items? None. Old business items, urban service district discussion. So, this is like a pre-discussion for a future discussion. Welcome to government. In regards to the urban services. We've discussed previously that we would like to have a more clear vision of our urban service district because development is right around the corner. We've discussed how we would, various people, how what we would like it to look like. And we thought perhaps our master plan was not quite as clear to developers. And so, we hope to create a more clear vision. And so, this is a plan to give Paul some more ideas to incorporate into our master plan potentially.
So, I think ultimately you all will have to make the decision if you do want to go forward and open the master plan. We don't technically have to review it until next year. But there's been quite a bit of discussion on what's coming and making sure that we're prepared. We talked about this at the last couple of meetings. So, in one case, we brought you an audit that Zach had done when he was here. Looking at the zoning ordinance and looking at some of the elements in the master plan. And I think what we recognized, the master plan is very complicated. And it's a little confusing in terms of the vision that it paints. And so, I heard from all of you and some other folks around the township that it might be good to to take a look at that, to clean it up, to really refine it, make sure that it is concise and actually showing, you know, the vision so that it's clearly communicated, not only to developers, but to the community as a whole. And making sure that we're looking, you know, we're showing what we want to have there. And then, the master plan then provides that direction for the zoning ordinance. So, there's a lot of things in your master plan right now that are probably more detailed than they should be. Getting into like light fixture styles and things like that. A lot of that, I feel like you can kind of tell the picture with, tell the story with pictures, right? Use graphics to kind of explain things to augment the words that are in the document. So, in this cover memo, we talk about what the steps are and the difference between the master plan and the zoning ordinance. So, the master plan is policy, the zoning ordinance is law, right? And so, if you guys do want to go ahead and open this up and start a actual planning process, there are some requirements that we have to go through. And one of those is to send out a notice of intent to plan to neighboring municipalities, the county and utility providers within the county, that's just, or within the township, excuse me. That's just one of the requirements from the Planning Enabling Act. So, if we want to move forward with that, you know, give me that direction and we as staff can get that letter out. But then in addition, based on our last discussion, we have the attachment to the memo that you received in your packet. And that talks a little bit about some of the development strategies that we might recommend as you're looking at the master plan and how we might update it. And then, we were requested to provide a little more detail about the various elements of the urban service district. So, this map is in your packets. We had it on a board last night, which is still here, and I could get it out, but I don't know that you all need to see it on a board. But, you know, this is a future land use plan for the urban service district. And so, the future land use plan, as you all know, provides the direction for what land uses the township would like to see in a particular area. So, if somebody came in and wanted to do a development and wanted to rezone a particular piece of property from agricultural, which most of the property in the township, as you all know, is AR, ag residential. For example, you know, the southeast corner where Salem Springs is, that's a subdivision density type residential development. So, that's consistent with that future land use plan. And then, across the street, across Godferson, you have the, that's currently zone ag residential, but planned for business parks. So, that could be one of the considerations, you know, is that the right mix of land uses, the right areas for those land uses, et cetera. So, with this supplemental piece, we put some images in about what we understand the vision for that, those individual future land uses is, whether it's the village mixed-use district, the residential multiple district, low-density residential. That really just kind of coincides with some of the areas that are already developed that we don't expect to see new development in on. There's a couple of private roads there that have large lot, single-family residence on them. And then, there's the balance of the area, which is planned to be single-family residential over that business park district. So, that's kind of what we provided for you. And some suggestions about what the regulations might be, the strategies that would come out of that master plan document that would then provide direction for us in terms of how we might update the zoning ordinance. So, it's kind of that procedure. First, you start with plan, the vision, and then that will provide the guidance or the policy that you need to update the zoning ordinance. That's kind of it. At a high level, I'm happy to dive into any of the details that are here. Like I said, we try to provide more details. If this is not the right information that you were looking for, or if there's additional information, certainly let us know that as well.
I think that, in a nutshell, we want to, like I said, provide more direction and vision for potential developers. We've had them come for us wanting to change things within our master plan. And I thought it was important that we start with the master plan of the vision before we start messing with the ordinance is. Because otherwise, it just makes things really messy. And quite frankly, our master plan is a beast.
Right here.
Yeah, it is. And it took us forever to get through it. And we've gone through, we've gone through a couple of different planners and a couple of different visions and a couple of different strategies and perspectives. And so, now, it is what it is. You know, you can't eat the elephant on the one bite. So, we're going to start probably with our most important area, which is the urban services district. Because right now, it's a clean slate. But it's a beautiful area and we're required to have an area like that. And so, that's why I thought we would start there. And that's the purpose of this. Paul needs to know, what do, what do we want? What do people, what do we as representative of our community think that this area should look like? And of course, everybody says, not Canton, no Walmarts. I'm going to say, no Meyer, even though I totally planned on bringing the paper, the article in the paper that said Meyer is suing Plymouth for their denial by the planning commission. So, that's our goal today. What do you think our community likes to see? We're not just a planning commission. We're also members. We also have neighbors. And we also, I mean, a lot of people, nearly everybody here.
Pam, I can't speak to the, this is particulars with Plymouth, but I would say that a strong master plan provides strong defensibility, so.
Sure, so let's start with the vision. So, that's what, that's what our goal is today. What, we went through this master plan and we liked it when we created it. But now, as we're going along and we're more familiar with it, can we make it better?
Do we?
Is there something we left out? Or is there something that, you know?
On the business park area, do we make that bigger or smaller? You know, for today's, let's say trends?
Well, and what's a trend today may not be a trend.
Right, that's just it.
Next year, so.
The village mixed-use area? Is, that's, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's apartments, stuff like that, site condos that are next to them? Is that, that's part of that, what that is, I mean?
Well, I believe we had a group in here two months ago. And I wasn't here, I apologize, had a family thing to deal with. They wanted to put housing into a business park. And so, the discussion in this, that was not the first time there, that was the second time. I was here for the first one. And one of the things that we thought was important was to have a mixed use. And as residents, as well as planning commissioners, you know, we've got a huge residential area in there. And so, to change that, we did not feel that would have been appropriate. Yes, Linda?
I think one of the things when you're talking about the change, if you want to get a map, you ought to have it designated where you already have approved development. Because you have a number of approved developments, for sure. We've got residential, they've got, I think it's 391,000 square feet of retail. And those are kind of, those are already tentatively approved. The board every year extends the approval. So, that's where I think you need to start, is to put those in because those already exist. And then, have your discussion about, do we make any other changes?
Exactly. So, that's what, is our, is our map, is our vision, is our goal, is this accurate? Are there any other ideas? We're saying people here every month. It's hard to get new ideas. Yes, Pam?
Can I ask you something about this map?
Yes.
Where the interchange on the expressway is and Godferson stops? Are they going to do, is Godferson going to be disappeared? Is it not, there is a town with a circle, with a blue circle with an X in it. I was told that was a gateway. Are they going to make a gated, built business area? Please explain if you can.
Talking about the blue circle.
Yeah.
In the Godferson.
Look, I looked at the part of 14 interchange in Godferson.
Right.
And then, you go to the other side of the VMU and the dotted line, there's another gate sign there. If that's a gate sign, if that's a traffic light, I stand corrected. But in between that and where the two blue circles are, Godferson Road is a pure.
If I may.
Yes.
So, gateway is a term that we use as a, like an entryway? So, it's like a gateway to a community, not a literal gate, but?
Well, I didn't expect it was a gate with guard standing on it. But if it's got, if it's got anything like that, I don't think it's proper in our area.
It's not. It's more like a welcoming spot. So, typically, the term gateway, when we're using it in a planning context, means that it's, it's an entryway to a community. And so, it's something that takes special attention. So, we want to make sure that we address it in a way aesthetically, that it kind of signifies you're entering the community.
And then, the other side, there's no road between the two gateways.
Appears to be. Yeah, there is.
Yeah, the road layer really doesn't show up on this map here. That little piece between the interchange does show up because it's on top of the aerial photo. But if you look at all the roadways throughout this area, they're under the, under the other layers, so.
Going south of Quinns, so it has, and I just wondered if they were planning on closing that road? Or what's that?
This is conceptual at this point, so.
Well, you said we had to get our ideas, and I wanted to know if that was one of your ideas?
I've got a quick question.
Yeah.
And forgive me if this has been answered before. With the business parks, I know that approval has been extended to, for development. Has there been any interest from corporations or the like to come into those business park areas? And I guess the reason I'm asking is because Salem is a very desirable place to live. And so, if we're not getting the interest from business parks, and I understand that there's a, we've got to consider business parks for tax purposes. But if we're not getting the traction with them, at some point, something's better than nothing. And to open it up to residential, and I've got some, I've got some caveats with that as well. But to open it up, I think should be a consideration. So, I guess my first question is, is there any interest from, any corporation to come in based on the prior approvals given by the board?
So, there have not been any approved plans here except for the single-family residential PUD in the southeast corner. The rest of this area has been planned as a urban services district for, I think, the better part of two decades, maybe longer now. I think I've been saying two decades for a little while now, so it's probably longer. There hasn't, with the understanding that a developer would have to bring those utilities in, I don't know that a business park would be the first one to come do that if those, if those utilities and things weren't already there. So, so there haven't been any approvals per se. I don't know about the historic interest in this area. I know that there were different plans for this area years ago. There was some kind of corporate headquarters that were going to come in here. So, there, there have been various things bandied about. I think, I think that if, what I'm hearing is that it sounds like you guys want to do a little bit of a deeper dive. And I think those kind of questions are interesting. And so, part of what we put in our report were the acreages that are dedicated to each of these different uses so that we can start to look at, you know, whether it's the right mix of use, whether we expect in the near term or long term that any of this would actually be realized. And so, certainly, that can be a consideration. Development trends do change, right? So, there's, there is a point to maintaining land for certain uses, whether it's the hot ticket at the time or not. But the question remains, do we need, you know, 430 acres of single-family? Or do we need 300 acres of business park? Do we need, you know, so these different numbers, is that the right ratio? And if we kind of look more closely about how these things might lay out and what that might look like in reality, which we can, we can do, I don't think we have the ability to do it. We didn't dive into doing that kind of detail at this point until we heard from you all that you really wanted to have this exercise. At which time, we can start to play with those different numbers. We can start to lay things out if they might look. This is a pretty discreet area in township, so it's not likely you're going to have to do this for the, for an entire 36 square miles. We're really just looking at this little area. So, we can, we can do some different exercises. And I think as part of the planning process, if you say, yep, we're going to open up the master plan, then we're also going to want to reach out to the public and make sure that we get more than a regular three people here to provide commentary.
Sure. Yeah, I think that's important, that we identify, you know, we don't want to just designate and just say, this is what it is. But to really make a, a, an organized decision based on some kind of consensus. You know, whether or not we need all of this business development or business park plan. I mean, I'm sure for business parks, there are some areas of land that are more desirable than others and areas that we would want them as opposed to others. Then, if you have business park, are you going to strap a residential neighborhood right in next to it? Because I think one of the things that makes Salem special is the fact that we have land and that, you know, we can have a little bit of acreage over the elbow room. And I think that was my, if I had any amendments to what was proposed earlier, was that the houses, you know, they were too jammed in, they were jammed in, you know, they wanted to cut the acreage down to almost half an acre or whatever it was per house. And, you know, I would much rather a larger footprint for a house on more acres as opposed to jamming in a bunch of, you know, houses into a small, full-acreage area. But, you know, with these three areas designated business park, I think some additional research just needs to be done. Is to, are these beneficial for potential corporations to come in? Is this desirable? Do they want to be here and why? I don't know if we've done that research or asked anyone's opinion over. It's just been a designation at this point. It's just been a designation. I think we need to seriously open the conversation and let them tell us what's attractive about it or not. And then, that'll help us in, in combination with, you know, our, our neighbors. You don't make a decision, they want to kind of pivot away from that to some kind of a, you know, residential area. To my thoughts.
We did have a conversation with that a few months ago, with a developer had come in. And he wanted to put residential in there, in the business park area. And one of the things that we discussed was, there's residential all over here with high density, which, yeah, it's high density. And one of the things we also discussed, and I believe Linda may have brought up, is having a variety. And she, she actually mentioned about the tax basis of what brings in what. And so, the developers' comments were, well, who's going to want to be a business park? And I think some of the, I don't know if it was discussion, or maybe I just lied to myself, was that we don't know who wants to come in there right now because of the utilities. And so, that's on hold. Businesses, and then, of course, when we did this master plan, it was in 2019. So, that was, a lot of things have changed since then. So, next year, that's when we do this reevaluation and assessment of, is this what, you know, is this what we want to see? But back then, this is what we came up with. And just from my experience as being a resident, not just a planning commissioner, is one of the things that I hear my neighbors and talk about is they don't want to be overrun with residential. You know, where if you have, and also, I think it's important to have a mixed use in our community, so.
Pam? Paul? Me and you, is that new? I really, when I saw that, I had, I started searching, I couldn't find it. You know, a village mixed use. Now, that's running down Godferson Road, all the way up to Territorial. And I, with Mr. Huntsman, I agree with the VP. You've got one on the north side and two on the south side. And I don't know, do we really need that much, you know, business park? I mean, you look at a lot of the buildings, unless they're going to really cut back on the employees and say, hey, you got to come back to work or you can hang it up and stay home without pay. You know, they got all that office space available downtowns and other areas. And I just don't see, unless they're all going to run out and get the one-story buildings, you know, for office space. And that, but the VM, and then, that's got me confused on the down south, I mean, Godferson Road. You know, and that's going to be homes in there and businesses, is it all business?
So, if, to speak to the VMU, the village mixed use, that was a designation that we came up with back in 2018, 2019, when we were going through this process previously. If you look into that section of the master plan, there are some images provided. It's a mixed-use area that's supposed to be kind of like the name, like a village mixed-use area. So, more of a, kind of a small downtowny area that would have shops and restaurants as well as, you know, maybe apartments upstairs or townhomes. I think the vision would be to have something similar to a village center, you know. I mean, maybe certainly a little bit bigger than what we see in the hamlet. But I think the intent would be that it would stay kind of homey. And so, that would be the ideal commercial development that would happen in that area as opposed to a big box store. So, you know, years ago, there were proposals for the big box store. In fact, I think there was a consent judgment that allowed for that in that area. But this is our vision for the area. So, ideally, we'd be able to attract some development or developers that would come in and develop it in this way. And I think one of the things that we would like to do if we do move forward here is try to refine that vision and make it a little more, put strategies in place that would be designed to exact that kind of use in the future.
I've actually been hearing in the news that employers are actually encouraging their employees and changing their policies to have them come back to work. So, I know with the COVID, things had changed a lot, and now, things are starting to change again. So.
Yeah.
It's changing all the time.
The easement, the C, the conservation easement, I'm glad to see that in behind the people off of Territorial, the low-density residential area there, lighter color. That easement there protects them from the backside. I remember years ago, that was a big issue. I don't want to look out and see an office building there. And that now allows them to have that buffer between the two. That on the north side of the freeway is perfect as far as I'm concerned because do you have to put, I don't think the, MDOT would have to put that wall up there for sound like they have to do.
Well, that, that area is actually a pretty environmentally sensitive area with a stream corridor that runs through there and lots of wetlands. So, that's kind of why we landed on that. And this, in fact, is your current future land use plan for this area. So, that's what you have on the books and that's what we're looking at to evaluate. But it sounds to me like, like you all are interested in doing a little bit of a deeper dive. So, I think the next step, if I'm hearing you correctly, would be for us to send out that intent to plan. And then, I guess what I want to hear from you all and what I'm hearing from you is what additional information do you need to start to evaluate this?
Just for Paul, do you mind just kind of, maybe for Mike's benefit, for my benefit certainly, because I forget things. When it comes to a legal standing in a township, I mean, there's reasons why we set apart this urban service district. So, someone comes up to us and says, hey, we want to put up a Meyer. Well, if you want to put up a Meyer in Salem Township, we have this area designated for, you know, it's set aside, this is where you can do it. This is where you're permitted to do certain things. Someone came and said, well, I want to do it up that six and Curry or something. Could you kind of just refresh your on that?
So, historically, the thinking was, and the practice of the law was that each community had to provide for every use within that community. I think what we're finding now is that there is some leeway with that where you can demonstrate that a particular use is provided within a region. So, it does not have to be your backyard per se. You know, Salem Township is six by six square miles, right? Or six by six miles, 36 square miles. So, a lot of this came from, you know, court cases over especially mobile home parks. And so, the lobbyists for those industries were saying, you had to, you had to provide an area that was zoned to allow for this, right? The historic thinking behind the utilities service district was, okay, if we provide an area, just like you said, we provide an area where urban services are provided or planned, then we can say, all right, the rest of the township is going to stay rural. This is the area where we've designated it. So, it's a little of both, I think. think the, I think the standing to say that you have, you must provide a space for a mire or a big box store particularly.
Yeah.
Uh, I, I think that there's some leeway now. I think things are changing in that regard because you might be able to say, well, just, you know, a few miles down the road at the Beck Road exit, you have all these things, right? So, but that is, that is why this area was developed in the first place, was so that you could concentrate your areas in a place where development might be more appropriate than the rest of the township. So, so you are exactly right. That was the impetus behind the urban service district.
When, when it comes to giving a specification for things like lighting or roads or stuff, not that everything has to be like this, but I learned this from an architect, but it was basically, you don't necessarily give something that has numbers and units all the time. And as an engineer type, that drives me insane, but I see where he's coming from when he gives an example. It's things like, saying something like, I want to be sitting on the couch next to the fireplace and see the kids come down the stairs on Christmas morning. Now, you haven't said how many stairs there are, how big the couch is, you know, what direction, but you're just saying, here's a feel for it. So as you look to things like this VNP or something like that, VMU Village, is it?
Mm-hmm.
You know, that's, that's like, a guy loves having an apartment above a takeout Thai place. You know, it's, it's descriptions like that. It's, it's things like that that give the feel of what it is that I think need to come into play. It's not going to be, you know, ninety percent of it, but kind of just getting that essence of it. Does that make sense?
That, that's, that's the point of this is for us to give Paul.
Yeah.
Some ideas of what we think, not just ourselves, but our community would like to see. I mean, we hear, we hear it when they come in, you know, we, we know what, what makes them happy. We know what makes them upset. So it's the vision. That's, that's the master plan. And one of the things, just to come up with something, I can't even remember who said it, but we get these developers or in the pre-development meetings, the first thing they want to do is to put something that's not designated for that use somewhere else. And so.
Well, you have something to work with.
Well, I think, but in the past, I think we were receiving some guidance as that's okay, that's acceptable. And it's, I'm sure it is, but the question should, should be, is it necessary and is it, is it, is it appropriate? Is that something? Because then you start getting that sliding scale of, okay, well, we can do that. We can do that. And, and I remember seeing that when I first came, yep, we can do that. We can accommodate that. We can make that happen. We can make that work. And then all of a sudden, what do we have? We didn't adhere to our plan. So are we going to adhere to our plan with an iron fist? No, but we should always be asking ourselves, is this appropriate for our community? Is this what our neighbors want to see? Is this consult with our, consult with our plan?
To, to Mike's point before, I mean, what if single family residential is full, it's done. And we have ninety-nine percent of the business park available. And somebody comes in and says, I'd like to do more with single family residential.
We did, we did have that.
Yeah. Wow.
But, but we, we can't say that, I, I, I don't think we can say that business park is not, isn't an option or it's too much because, because we don't have utilities yet. So we're not, I don't think we're going to get the interest. And just coming off COVID, so many things are really changing right now, the way I see it.
There's a lot of broth in the water.
Yeah, yeah.
Do we, do we? Does anybody know, I sure have. How do we compare with any sort of incentives for businesses to come into this area as compared to Mitzi, Mitzi, right down the road here? The five mile Victor Town Northville Plumb corridor?
Uh, so most of those places probably do have some kind of industrial tax incentive districts set up, which we don't have anything like that set up because we haven't really established these districts yet. So if somebody came in.
Is that a chicken egg thing? Like if, if we had utilities and curbing and an address and it's sitting there with a driveway going into a, you know, a hayfield, you know?
And if you zoned it industrial or you zoned it business park, then you might establish a district like that to provide those incentives. Short, short of, I mean, it being zoned ag right now, you, you wouldn't do that. You couldn't do that. I'm talking about these lands in particular.
I think it's important to, um, and again, this is what I'm hearing from, you know, from developers and from neighbors, you know, who live around here is this may be a, um, maybe we could better compartmentalize our ideas on this map. Cause I think with the community and the developers, sometimes they don't want to go side by side. And the community says, well, I don't want to look at some huge semi-truck industrial building or something out of my backyard. And I understand that. And so maybe if this map, um, if we were to revisit it, hear from the community, see what their thought processes are, hear from potential, you know, corporations, uh, cause there's a tax benefit to having them in our community as to what's an attractive location for them. Maybe we could better compartmentalize this map to where it's not so intertwined, where we have defined residential on one's, you know, one section. Or maybe the, uh, the southeast corner is going to be, right now it's zoned for single family. Maybe that's our, our business park where it's in the back corner. And then families who are wanting a house, you know, on some land have it and they have the feeling of living in Salem, just, you know, away from, um, you know, the industry. And I love the idea of having a mixed village. I think it's fantastic. I think it's, uh, you know, a lot of communities have it. It drives, um, a lot of attention, you know, to, you know, our neighboring cities who have, um, that kind of mixed use area. So I think having that away from the industrial part, obviously away from residential keeps the noise down. And, you know, I think we may be able to, and I'm not sure if it's a huge ask, but if we were to revisit this map, we may be able to better compartmentalize our designation, um, for these districts based on, you know, the feedback that I've been hearing from both the developers and our neighbors. So that's just my thoughts on it.
I would also like to see, um, in revisiting this, and, and, and you can remind me, we may have already done this, but the flow of traffic is a huge issue. We have an urban services district and no roads. I think, you know, what do we have? What are our options? Do we put things in the right place?
So I've had some.
I think that's important.
Preliminary conversations with Watts, the Washtenaw Area Transportation Study, and they will do some kind of projections based on future land use about what, what traffic density, what traffic might be driven based on the densities that are proposed. Um, so that's certainly a resource that we could look to. I think one of the, uh, things that we note in your existing plan, as well as some of the things that we'd like to refine a little bit, is just making sure that we have a, a, a traffic plan, you know? So we've got designated, uh, intersections as opposed to, you know, curb cuts every seventy-five feet or something like that. So, so certainly those are elements that we can look into. Um, and it would be nice to have the transportation plan in place so that when development does come, we can recognize what we want those developers to do right off the bat instead of playing catch up after everything's in. So I think that's a great point.
I remember the plan that was out there had bypass roads. So if you didn't want to go through the center of the VMU, there was, it was kicking around it from what I, from what I recall. It was, I mean, it was considered. It wasn't down to the, you know, what the cross section of the curb looked like, but it was certainly saying, hey, you know, you don't want to go through this shopping area. You don't have to. You can zip right out. That's the main goal that you're doing.
First question to me, how is this, how is this going to function?
Maybe look at putting a bigger green valley between business and residential. Take up some of that business or residential. So residential doesn't have to see business once, once they come in.
I drive right past the Lowe's on Jackson Road down in Ann Arbor all the time. I'm going to the Lowe's on Jackson Road in Ann Arbor and I always just drive right past it. Set back two, three hundred feet, there's fifty, sixty, eighty feet of trees and everything. Set back, you don't even see it. Blast right by it. I think it's beautiful. Then you go up to South Line and you see these hundred-year-old oak trees that are losing because somebody decided to put the power lines above the tree, you know, forty years. Dr. Seuss looking trees, but power lines don't, come on. Some of, some of, some of the best things that we can gauge for what we want is by observing what is out there that's working and what is out there that's not working. Try and make a, try and make a left-hand turn on Poniatra.
An eight and a half.
Between seven in the morning and nine in the morning, or four in the afternoon and six in the afternoon, six or seven o'clock. Try to make a left on Poniatra. How'd you find it?
Bruce, did you have a comment?
I just, uh, again, you know, we're, we're one exit town right here in the section here. So you've got to be able to track coming and going. We've got a lot, you know, we've come across a lot of traffic with, um, home from that, if I was my home in that residential district. I'm trying to get traffic timing. So I see that south of the freeway. So I, I think this all makes kind of good sense to me. You're trying to keep some of that heavy traffic away from the, uh, the village mixed use area. Uh, and we've got different time today where the traffic is in the business park versus some of the residential, uh, south of it. And last thing I want to see coming off that freeway is some sort of major truck stop or whatever. And we're a good spot for a truck stop right now. We're the last exit before, you know, it's undeveloped before you get into the metro Detroit area. And the other thing about our exit, by the way, is we're kind of smack dab between, it's an exit and we're smack dab between a lot of the, uh, Ann Arbor and Detroit technology, uh, stuff that's going on back and forth between the university and Francis Ford, airborne and whatnot, and now train, sort of the train station. A lot of development there. So there's a lot of activity going up and down fourteen. Uh, I think there will be attraction, especially for the nicely developed business park, you know, kind of more of the upscale business parks, all this, uh, center, that thing. So a little less track, lower side of track now, high density. So, and another comment I wanted to make is actually this makes sense because I'll tell you what a developer, they throw in a mire, they don't make a whole lot of money, but it's a quick sale. But if they're developing this village mixed use, a lot of finishes, a lot of, uh, architectural detail, a lot of stuff going in there, there's actually a chance for the developers to make more money developing something like this than the quick big box store. So I don't think they're going to be necessarily unhappy. I think they just look for some direction as to what we're going to find acceptable. And there's a nice cohesive, uh, development here. It's going to, you know, it's going to drive them to the point of putting upscale developments as well because they can see it's not going to be next to, to truck stop.
I think that's a discussion we had when we first tackled this back in twenty nineteen. And Paul, that's where we said we wanted pictures. We wanted, we wanted to see the walkways. We wanted to see, I have a vision for these developers of, of what the, um, not down to the detail, but you know, something appropriate for Salem and Salem style, you know? Cute, charming, walkable, family oriented, that kind of. Okay, I think we talked about what was, um, green, something bright. What's that? They have the walkways. They have the fireplaces out there. I can't remember what it is. Yes, Linda?
I think you guys need to understand the history of this. In nineteen ninety-eight, the township knew that it was an interchange, Bruce referenced. It's the last undeveloped in the urban area. The township knew that there would be pressures, but Bruce referenced that. And so they brought in a gentleman named Mark Wyckoff. He's one of the foremost planners in the state of Michigan. They have him up at a, a special planning session, a lot of years of Michigan State, where he talks. He's extremely articulate. And he worked with an attorney to create an urban services district. It wasn't to keep a trailer park out of the township. We already had that. It was to define what that interchange would be. The reason that you have some of the uses you have is because you have two fourteen ones and desires. You have people that live on Arcadia, if you're familiar with that, it's a private road. And then there's Valley, I think it's Valley Field or Valley View, one of the two. And they're, at the time, they were fairly expensive homes, probably three quarter of, three quarters of a million dollars when they were built. And so they had, people had invested a lot of money into those homes. And so the township went through the process and the rooms sold. Because the people that have homes there, they don't want to have to connect to water and sewer. It's pricey. They want to stand well and accept it. That's, I think Darryl referenced the, the one acre minimums for the homes. They wouldn't be required to hook into public water and sewer. Business is calm. But if you look at Plymouth Township and Northville Township, they're just now starting to develop up along Deep River Road. They've had their business parks a very long time. You don't dictate when business comes. Business decides when it comes. You guys have reference. They have water and sewer. The township's working towards it, but they don't know yet where sewer goes. Can't bring in things until you have those questions answered. And so the first thing you're, when you're going to have, when you open your discussion now, you have a number of developers in the area. Showstat does have approval for three hundred and ninety-one thousand square feet of retail space on the north side of Godferson. Or excuse me, north side of M fourteen, east side of Godferson. They also, I think, have permission along the north side of M fourteen. And they have permission for, if you reference my high density residential on the south side of the expressway. There are other developers employed and they have a certain expectation today. You guys seem to think that business, retail can't coexist with residential. So if you've lived in the area very long, you remember when they built the mire at Eight Mile and Hageri. And then after they had mires there for a decade or so, on the hill that overlooks the mire parking lot and it's a big amount of asphalt. You've got a lot of stores here that are across Hageri. They built million dollar homes. Residential can exist right next to retail. Somebody talked about, I think it was Kevin talked about, how big is your buffer? What type of planning? It isn't so much that I can't have retail next to residential. Some people actually desire it. That's what the village of Cherry Hill is. I remember when it was a farm. And you build Cherry Hill so that you would have, you'd go to your doctor there. You can eat there, you can shop there. And at the same time, they have homes on very small lines because they wanted a very walkable community. But the first thing I think you guys need to do before you get too far into this, if you're going to make any changes, you had better get an invite out to every resident that lives in that area. Because you're going to find that some of them don't agree with what you have to say. And it isn't our neighbors and other communities that we need to take into consideration. They get to find their community, not ours. Do you want an Amazon warehouse that abuts Salem Township? Cause we're getting one. Do you want a racetrack? It's the next property over? Cause we're getting that too. And do you want Northville lumber with all of its traffic on the other side of Deep River Road? They didn't ask us. They didn't come and say to our residents, hey, would you guys like to have a million square foot Amazon warehouse? And some of our residents are actually adjacent on that side of the road to it. So I think that before you get too far into it, understand why we have an urban services district. Understand why the uses were there because those uses came after meeting where this room was packed with angry residents. And get them invited here. I guarantee you, if Wayne Walls, he still lives in Salem Township, send an invitation to him. He'll get the recipe. And then you can hear what they want. Cause they're the impact.
I agree with including the community. Um, and that's why this is, I kind of joked about the beginning. This is the pre-discussion of the discussion. You have to have a discussion. What is everybody thinking? We can't just bam, implement. That's, that's not our role. That's not our job. Um, as far as, as, you know, the why we're doing it, this is why we're doing it. This is, this is, it's just to plan, how can, how can we look at this? And that's what we're doing.
But I haven't heard the planning that starts.
We're not, we're not planning it right now. We're saying, what do we want? How do we want? How do we want to tackle this? We're saying, what do we want, how do we want, how do we want to tackle this? And I, and you brought up a point.
Number one is, the impact of people ought to be invited to this.
And I, as I just said, that's exactly, that's, I agree with you.
Okay, so, again, if you're gonna plan, that's gotta be the first, the first step, or you...
But we're, we're, that's why this is a pre-planning. We're saying, let's look at this. What do we want to do? How do we want to communicate this? What's the message we want to communicate to address this? Do we even want to address it right now? Maybe we don't.
I have one last question. Is there any timelines, you know, for water and sewer? And I think that's important, too, if we consider this, if, you know, if we're gonna open this camel worms, water and sewer are ten years out, or something, seven years out.
If, if the developer who owns the PUD project in the southeast corner had their way, they would have utilities in place already. The, there's an ordinance for the area that requires the developer to bring those utilities in. The developer has not figured out the way to get sewer here at this point. So that's, that's what the holdup is at this point. But we expect that if, if they figure that out, then the dam will break, you know? So that is, I guess, an any moment kind of thing, could be an any moment kind of thing. So we really want to make sure that we have all of our ducks in a row, so that when that does happen and the interest is piqued, that when a developer comes in and says, I want to resume this property to X, we can say, yes, that's consistent with our plan, or no, that's not consistent with our plan. Take a look at what we've got in the books, so. So that's, that's the intent. Unfortunately, I don't know whether that's ten weeks, ten months, or...
Oh, excuse me. So it's just a, so it is getting, uh, for decision-making course, probably about the middle of September.
Okay.
That we just got notified. So it's, um, but again, it could, um, not that it's gonna be a slam dunk that it's gonna happen, but, um, they're gonna hear it. But also Eagle has written a letter to, um, support us of that sewer going through Superior. So, you know, it, it still could kick back, then it could go into appeals again, and then the long wait hasn't been waiting for so long. And the other thing, the other, other comment is, I think Planning Commission knows, but they need to know about what consent judgments, because of whether you agree with or not how the township had handled things before, got into litigation with them, and there's consent judgment on the east side of Garrison Road. So, you know, that's, that's what happens sometimes, you're getting these things when they come, and you get in disputes, and you don't want it, and then sometimes you lose. So, so, and then the other thing I've said, and again, um, for, I've been supervisor for almost 12 years, and what I've learned is that, you know, the PUD is, is what always can, uh, come in, people can come in, and you have to lis, you know, you listen to what they say. Uh, doesn't mean it necessarily has to be approved, but again, our ordinance allows it to use the plan unit development. So no matter what you have in your master plan, they still can come in. We can say, this is, it is not in our master plan, but they have every right to come in and do that. But I would just say, if you are going to review this, the Planning Commission needs to understand what pieces of property that are, are under consent judgment that...
So you, even from our 2019 plan, we show a different vision for that area that Showstack owns, and that's immediately east of Godferson, north of the highway. They do have the consent judgment that basically has a site plan that goes along with it, that looks like any other big box strip mall with an anchor on the end.
And we don't want that.
We don't want that. That's why we have a different vision in our plan, right?
We don't want that. We got COVID.
Yeah, and I think to Bruce's point, if we have something that is part of our vision, that the market is now recognizing as being a better way to do business, because I, I don't know that, except for the fact that, like you say, they can quickly turn a profit on something like that, um, you know, the ability to build a better development here may be attractive to them as, as the markets change. So keeping our best foot forward, keeping our vision out there is certainly important. So it, it sounds to me like, like you're all interested in, in diving into this a little bit, so I would suggest, like I, I wrote in the memo to you, that we, we go ahead and do send out that intent to plan, and then we can start to craft a, a strategy for tackling the planning process. And whether that's surveys, or, or holding an open house, or what have you, that will be the first step to really dive into this and, and look at if, if and what changes we would want to make in this area. Does that sound reasonable?
I think if and what is a good way to put it.
If you're able to, if we can have the revised map with the area that's been designated, or it's, you know, I guess, under some kind of a contract or whatever terminology it is, just so we know who has had...
Yeah, I mean, we, we won't change the master plan to have those things, but...
Oh, it's a pilot where...
Yeah, certainly, as, as we go through planning exercises, we can identify those different areas. I mean, we can, there, there are many different tools that we can do. We can, you know, count trees, identify streams, look at the healthy soils, you know, there, there are a variety of different things, but that certainly is, is one thing that would be helpful, I'm sure, to you all to understand.
I guess I'm referencing whatever...
Yes, yeah, yeah. And, and we can, we can identify what that area is, for sure.
Because there's two of them, right, that are under con, or...
There are two consent judgments.
Yeah. Whatever those areas are.
Yeah. In fact, I think Bruce, you might have made a map where you identified who the different property owners are of all the different properties in the USD, which can also be interesting because there are developers who own large slots of land here, so that also is telling about who we need to talk to and what their intents might be, so.
Also that we have a few new people here that haven't been through this before, so to just kind of educate them and bring them up to speed. What do we have as of today? Can't just look at a map and say, this is what we want to see. Is there our neighbors?
So I added up, so there's 630 acres dedicated to residential right now in the USD. There's 440 acres that would be more for business, commercial use between the village and mixed use and the business park. So it's like a 60/40 split. But, you know, we do need to keep in mind that residential's in that negative because it costs us. It costs the township. And it would be really good if our business, businesses that go in there will offset the cost of having residential. So that, just the way the split is, I just think we need to be careful about splitting off more into residential, or then it potentially just start costing the township. You know, taxes would go up. But I also think that once we get, do get sewer and water, start some development in the village mixed use, I mean, that is a big incentive for businesses, larger businesses that may want that business park, because the atmosphere would be so nice, um, that it would be incentive for their, you know, employees, um, nice environment, but it's not, none of that's gonna happen until we get through our water. So, yeah, it may be years. But there's nothing really, you know? And I know that developer, Vic Kingman, they wanted to turn 47 acres, which would be 15% of the business park acreage. Not counting what, you would need some kind of buffering, because there's not a major road going between the two acreages. Residential and business park, I guess, you know, as far as what the developer wanted. I don't see how that would work very well.
Any other questions? Comments? Ideas? Do you agree?
I think just, just one other thing you just had, just that Bruce and I have been talking about is that, is having, to talk to the board about having some of the stuff that's already been worked on, as far as that you can create a special assessment district in that area. And we need to get it legally sound and get the right person in here to help us with that. So that's something that we're trying to work on, uh, to get Jerry Fisher, I think most people know him, has been great with, uh, special assessments of land use, so. That's, that's kind of what we're trying to work on, just to get him involved in that stuff, which would be great for him to work with Planning Commission, if he can get this done, just so you know that.
Right, that's good.
Just some little, little questions, things I didn't understand. On which page? Uh, let's see. Were future land uses in the USD in special considerations? What does it mean a form-based code should be considered?
That is a zoning tool that focuses more on the form of a development, so it's, it's more prescriptive in terms of its requirements for what the buildings look like, and less prescriptive on what the end uses would be, um, which is kind of like a, a use of function follows form, if you will. So when you think about kind of like older downtowns where buildings get recycled year after year for hundreds of years, the intent is to create that district that you want to see, the, the particular type of bricks and mortar development.
Like a side-based?
Kind of.
So you said the side?
Uh, that's, that's more of like a, a design elements, whereas this is like, you have a zero setback. So instead of having a 20-foot minimum setback, you would have like a zero lot line setback, so your, your structure would be built right up to the sidewalk, and you would have, you know, standards for street, street space, you know, the public realm between the back of the curb and the building, that kind of thing. Put your parking behind the building so that you kind of mimic that downtown type of thing, so. It's just another tool that we, that we use to, to try to create those kind of developments.
That makes sense when you were talking about, like, we might need to replace some more specific things we have in here on landscaping and screening, and just replace it then.
Yes, a strategy to say do form-based, and then we can create that in the zone where it's.
Okay. And then the other thing was under corridor regulations, develop a roadway pattern in the BP districts to highlight the open space rather than the parking areas. Didn't really understand what happened there.
Um, so in other words, you would have a roadway design that wasn't just provide, providing a driveway to your parking lot. So you have a roadway that looks and feels like a roadway that you might have through your neighborhood or through, you know, the rest of the township, as opposed to just a, a paved spot to get you from the, uh, uh, public road into a parking lot. It, it's again, an emphasis on, on design and aesthetics, as opposed to just allowing for, you know, whatever's cheapest and easiest for a developer to do.
So is that clear? Would that statement be clear to...
I think, I think we can make it more clear, and I, I appreciate these questions, because that helps us understand how to better craft the language that we put forth to you. Uh, if, if we were to incorporate a strategy into the master plan to suggest that form-based would be, um, a direction that we would want to go, we could also include a section that explains what form-based code is.
Okay. We'll still need to figure out what we're gonna do with this, you know, and how we're going to, um, get the community involved, and, and it shouldn't just be a free-for-all, but we're gonna provide some sort of structure and guidance, let people know what we're doing, why we're doing it.
Well, that's one of the things that we do. We, we create public, public engagement strategies to make sure that we're asking the right questions and we're doing it in the right way, and we're, by no means do we want to create a free-for-all. We want to, we want to be able to ask the questions so we get the feedback that we're looking for in order to develop the plan.
And like, I know, I don't know what it was about, that we didn't think that residential and business could coexist. I think Bart already gave an example that we could, you know, fall by the lows, it's certainly feasible and doable, too. You know, creating, screening and whatnot, so.
Linda was talking about before, the mire was there first, and then people decided to live there.
Yeah.
Yeah. The concrete crusher was here, and people decided to buy houses, so.
Well, and I like the multi, multi, um, the, like, the townhouse. I like that concept that's in the master plan right now, where it bucks right up to the businesses, because if you're, if you want a walkable area, you want to have the businesses right there. You know, you know, if you're there, you don't really care about a buffer. Sidewalk is good, you know, so I, I like that.
I like that mixed use. I hear a lot about people wanting to move to an area where they don't have to drive and do lawns and all that stuff.
Maybe we want to expand the village mixed use here, I don't know.
I do have a question. Does something, does something like the stormwater management, do you really have to have something like that in the master plan? I mean, isn't that covered in our building codes and zone ordinances and all that?
So, so again, this is a policy document. It gives you, it gives you backing for the other ordinances that you either have on the books or want to create. So making a statement that you care strongly about protecting stormwater is a, is a policy statement that then allows you the ability to structure your ordinances in such a way that they're even more or less stringent.
Okay, I just didn't know if it was, like, redundant.
It's, it's okay to be redundant in some cases, but, but really, again, the, the master plan is your policy document, the other ordinances become your regulations. So this...
Gaps are dangerous than overlaps.
I'm sorry?
Gaps are more dangerous than overlaps.
Agreed.
Just a thought in here, looking at this, how would, how would schools come into play with this? You know, when we put in a hundred, a hundred residencies, and would we want to consider, I mean, I know it's not the question to answer, but just...
So I think part of your...
High school, middle school, elementary school, you've got all these new residences, you've got businesses that could contribute to that, and, you know, put up another building and not, and I, I guess I don't know, but I believe this would all go to Ann Arbor schools, right? This area is south of Joyce, so it's Ann Arbor.
Plum and Canyon.
Oh, it's north, it's north.
So, so one of the things I think that's important is to make sure that when you're doing your planning process, you do engage all the stakeholders, you know, like as Pam was saying, we want to talk to our neighbors, the folks who live in the community, but there are other people who support our community that may not be right within our borders. So maybe it's the school system, maybe it's the public transportation system. So, so there are different groups, different stakeholders that we might want to get input from as, as we...
I'd be very interested to see what, how a strategy would be of, you know, having a school in this area. I mean, if you're talking walking and if people want to be able to wait there, wait there, well, kids are coming home from school and, it, bikes not buses and who knows? I don't, yeah, just, I don't know how it would get mixed in totally.
I mean, we could, we could, again, coordinate with the, with the school system. Um, we, we unfortunately can't really dictate zoning for schools. Um, schools, uh, have their own planning ideas oftentimes, but if, if we can get some collaboration between different, uh, agencies who have authority to do planning, I think it's fantastic. So by all means, I think we should reach out to the school system and let them know we're planning and see if they want to engage us.
Yeah, yeah, I just, we just, we're seeing what's been mentioned, and so, you know, it's like, huge.
Anyone else? Okay.
Yeah, yeah, just, just, we just, we just, it's been mentioned, it's, it's...
Okay. Last call, okay. Reports of commissioners and correspondents for trustee?
We discussed the property maintenance code, light ordinance, again, and again postponed a vote. Also, we're, got a quote approved for a lighting plan for the Salem Farm Preserve.
The ZDA? Land preservation and conservation?
Had me last week, and we're also, again, trying to help with those ordinances that we talked about. We need some help here on the watershed as well, and help write those, Chris Olson. And help bring some more language to bring to you, to help expedite that, increase budgets and whatnot. And then, they're not whole, much looking at finding something for people that may be concerned in some land preservation, some sort of a, a meeting for that, so it's something that works for...
Any ETA, um, or anything else?
Again, some kind of a meeting, we should be able to kind of get right back together again. It's been summer, summer.
Fall.
We all was the same meeting, I think.
Sure. Planning consultants, review?
There are no real new developments coming our way. We just had a pre-construction meeting with Doyle Storage, that's the one down on Salem Road. You saw that some time ago, it's, it's a really small addition to its existing storage area. We are working on a plan with Mr. Horton for an area that he would like to prep off of Five Mile. We're still working through the planning process with that. Otherwise, no, no rumblings of developments coming our way. I think there may be a, working on a pre-application meeting with some folks who are looking to do a animal rescue, but we don't really have any details on that one yet either, so that's where we are. And while I'm talking, I would like to introduce Michelle Marin, my colleague from Carlin Wardman. She's been helping out with some of the master planning stuff, and so you probably see her face more and her name on, on reports as they come your way, so I wanted to put a face with an A.
Welcome, Michelle.
Thank you.
Okay, approval of the minutes of June 19, 2023?
I'd like to vote to approve the minutes of June 19, 2023, yes, submitted.
All those in favor of approving the June 19, 2023 minutes, asked of them, say aye.
Aye.
Posed, none? Public comment? Chairperson comment?
I know we didn't like, really accomplish anything today, but I think it's good for us to get together now and then and have discussion, and see where everybody is, and create a plan, and, and touch base, so, that's all. Keep the open meetings active, neat and clean.
Okay, we are adjourned at 8:44, thank you.
Oh, thank you. Probably roll out of it.